You can talk, yeah. I mean, I'll be in here. Hang on a second, I gotta. All right, who are these people?
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Like to call the meeting to order. This is Thursday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Had a Riverhead Planning Board meeting. I'm gonna ask everyone if they could please mute their phones or their mics until their application is up and you wish to speak, and if someone wants to speak, otherwise, if you could please raise your hand, we're gonna try and keep this as orderly as possible. So please, you know, bear with us and be patient. I will forego the the Pledge of Allegiance today. I don't have a flag displayed. So perhaps we'll just take a quick moment of silence for our troops around the world protecting our freedom and everyone that was impacted by the coronavirus. Okay, thank you. So at this time, I've just so we could officially show that we have a quorum. As far as board members go, Vice Chair Ed Densieski.
Chairman.
Present, thank you. Member Dick O'Day.
Yeah.
Member George Ninaro.
Here.
And member Joe Bear.
Here.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so the first application today is for the vistas at Bating Hollow. And I think we have Chris Kent on, you could unmute yourself, Chris, and also this is Greg Bergman's application, so I'll let Greg take it from here.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. So we have a amended condominium map application which was submitted for the vistas at Bating Hollow. As you recall, the planning board recently granted an amended site plan approval for the vistas at Bating Hollow. That was Resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-one dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty. That resolution approved the demolition of six existing condominium units within an existing building. And the construction of a new six-unit condominium building which was gonna be architecturally harmonious with the rest of the site. In connection with the original approval of the vistas at Bating Hollow, the planning board did approve a condominium map by Resolution number eighteen dash eighty-seven. That resolution was dated December twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Per the new amended site plan approval, the applicant did need to amend their condominium map to reflect the site configuration to accurately coincide with the recently approved site plan. We did receive the amended condominium map prepared by Gregory Bruyier, Landscorer, last dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. I have distributed that map to the planning board members. This map has received approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services for unit designation purposes only. Received approval from the Health Department on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. As the amended condominium map has been revised to accurately reflect the approved site layout, staff recommends approval of the revised condominium map, which will allow the applicant to file that map with the Suffolk County Clerk. Upon filing of that map with the county clerk, the applicant must provide the planning department with a stamped filed copy of that map for records retention. And we do have a resolution on this meeting to approve that amended condominium map.
Okay. Is there anything that the board needs to discuss or decide on this amended map, Greg?
I mean, not really. It's really, this is really just done to reflect the new site layout to allow them to do the proper filing, so I mean, it's, you know, I don't wanna say it's just a matter of procedure, but this one's pretty simple.
Okay, so Mr. Kent has reviewed the resolution and no issue, Chris?
Yeah, no issue at all. The only thing I would revise in what Greg said is that the prior, the existing building was a six-unit building, but they were, they were not condominiums. They were just dwelling units that were going to be converted to condominiums under the prior approval and under the prior map. And now what we've done is taken down that building that really didn't fit in with the rest of the approved community. And we're gonna construct a smaller building, only two-story instead of three-story, that's consistent with the other buildings that have been approved, so. And this, these will be, you know, six condominium units for the total of twenty-seven units that were previously approved.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board?
None here. None here.
No, Chairman.
So we'll take up the resolution a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Calverton Solar Energy Center, Next Terra. Greg, this one's yours, too.
All right. Thank you. So this is a follow-up project update from the last meeting on February fourth. Just to refresh everyone's memory, this is a site plan application to construct a twenty-two-point-nine-megawatt commercial solar energy production facility, including underground transmission lines, step-up transformer facility, and related site improvements within the industrial sea zoning use district. There, the two parcels are located at one forty-nine Edwards Avenue and twenty-seven fourteen River Road in Calverton. As a follow-up, items from the February fourth meeting, the applicant has submitted revised drawings. They did address a number of those requirements. For example, they did provide details of the proposed step-up facility to be located in proximity to Edwards Avenue. They have provided landscaping profiles on the two northern portions of the property that were required by code. The applicant has provided an owner's endorsement and an easement from the neighboring property, what I'd call the back nine of the Calverton Lakes Golf Course. And they actually just provided the easement for the LIPA property, which is located across Edwards Avenue to the east. So they have addressed both of those easement issues. The applicant has updated the existing underground utility profile within the Edwards Avenue right-of-way. That profile now identifies the existing gas main, six underground power lines, as well as an existing water main, which can be seen on Sheet C three-one-seven of the site plan. Illegal descriptions of the Edwards Avenue easement area has been provided on the site plan. And there was one detail which needs some clarification on there. They did provide a proposed underground, it's called a typical MVAC trench detail, which shows three MVAC conductors, one trench ground, and one fiber optic cable in a one-inch HDPE interduct. It was just a little unclear if that's the typical trench detail throughout the site, or if that is the proposed utility detail that will be directionally forward underneath Edwards Avenue. That's just one item I'd like the applicant to address. Now, there are some additional concerns and considerations for this board to consider with regards to this revised site plan. As I stated, there is a proposed collective substation or step-up facility which is located on the, what I'd call the Long Island Sports Park parcel, Suffolk County Taxman number six hundred dash one thirty-seven dash one dash two-point-one. Details of those have been provided. Now, those plans are prepared by ECI Engineering Services and are last dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. And those plans include what they're called a static mass, proposed at a height of forty-five feet, as well as related electrical step-up equipment, which ranges in a height from approximately twenty-two feet to twenty-six feet. The proposed location of this substation places a static mass approximately eighty feet from the property line in Edwards Avenue. And this has the potential to negatively impact the visual aesthetics from Edwards Avenue. Staff has made the recommendation that the location of the substation be swapped, for lack of a better phrase, and relocated, you know, they can, I would rather personally see panels, I would make that recommendation to the board, that the solar panels should be closer to Edwards Avenue while locating this substation further back. I did just kind of rough scalings on my drawings and the plans that I have, and it seems as though they could set that substation back to have a setback of approximately three hundred and sixty feet from Edwards Avenue, which would thereby significantly reduce the visual impacts proposed by the substation. Through my report, as I stated, they did provide the LIPA easement. There's a couple of minor details, for example, on Sheet C three-one-four of the site plan, it appears to show some fencing installed through an existing vegetated area. I would make the recommendation that any site plans need to revise to show fencing outside the limits of any vegetated area, as there is no additional tree clearing permitted by this application in order to comply with Long Island pine dairons compatible growth area requirements. The plans must also be revised to show the location of the existing water main on-site and the location of the existing fire hydrant, which is located in the vicinity of the clubhouse. That is a private fire hydrant, that is not a town-owned fire hydrant. Fire marshal comments, which were provided by the planning board, required that the hydrant be relocated further south along the facility's access road, so they must revise the plans to show that. Must be done in accordance with any town or Riverhead Water District requirements. And I did note that there are now, while I did say the applicant did show vegetative buffers on their landscaping plan, specifically Sheets L one hundred and L one oh one. There are some inconsistencies with the vegetative buffers when they get to the other detailed cut sheets on the plans. For example, on Sheet C three zero eight, the plan now shows a drainage recharge area on the northern portion of one of those parcels where that twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is required. So I would make the recommendation, just because when you look at Sheets L one hundred and L one oh one, I believe the scale is one inch equals six hundred feet, which is not really in any legible scale. So I would make the recommendation that any sheets, the details where they're shown in a closer scale to be legible, those plans should be revised to show any required vegetative buffers to ensure that they'll be able to meet those requirements as required by town code.
Greg, I'm looking at L one hundred right now.
Yes, sir.
Last time we had a discussion about this, we were either talking about the form or some improved. Yet I don't see it here. They make any changes to that?
Well, so that, that's ultimately a decision for the board. I mean, they did, you know, they did make some comments as it relates to the viability of the trees, but that's something I'm gonna let the applicant speak to. I mean, you know, that would be something I would recommend, they should probably get the opinion of a registered landscape architect. Provide some certification on that, or provide some feedback, but ultimately, that would be a board decision, and I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Yeah, they don't have a lot of, you know, street furniture. I think it's an easy fix.
All right. So let's see, one other question I had regarding specifically on the landscaping, the Sheet L one hundred shows a deep, typical layout of the landscaping configuration. On the industrial screening, it shows the evergreen bush, the evergreen trees planted fifteen feet on center. And it also shows the typical residential screening design, which shows evergreens planted twelve feet on center. Now, as of right now, these designs are prepared by a, they are prepared by a registered landscape architect, so I would just like confirmation that those, the branching habitats for those specific trees will actually be able to reach that twelve-foot or fifteen-foot on center to ensure that they provide adequate visual screening. And one final recommendation is that, you know, prior to any building permits being issued, I recommend that any areas of existing vegetation on-site be protected by construction fencing or some other method to ensure that they don't, you know, accidentally encroach into any of these areas and that there's no additional tree clearing. That's what I've got at this point. I would, you know, if the board has any questions, we can bring the applicant in and have them address any concerns.
So Greg, I couldn't agree more with the visual impacts of that step-down, step-up facility right on Edwards Avenue. You know, there's no reason why that can't be located further back on the property. You know, that, that's gonna be a real eyesore right from Edwards Avenue. It's much too close. So I also like to note, thank Mr. La Squadro for getting us that letter from LIPA as we requested, so thank you for that. Did we receive any comments from Vidi Gordiello on that directional drill and the amount of conduits that are required to go under Edwards Avenue?
I have not, and I'll be, I don't wanna put that into Vini, I've just been tied up with her stuff, I haven't been able to reach out to him to get those comments, so that, that, that's me, I'll, I'll take the one I hit on that one. But we can follow up, but like I said, I would, you know, the, that trench detail, I would like the applicant to speak to that specifically, because if it's gonna be the, basically, the three, you know, three conduits of the electrical lines with a one-inch with the ground, and then the the fiber optic communications cable, their initial comment was that there were gonna be six conduits. It seems like now they've been reduced to five, which seems like it might be in line with just beating this facility, but again, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Well, it still seems a little, a little excessive to me to have five, six-inch conduits for the power they're generating there. But if the applicant finds it absolutely necessary to have that, well, we should put a condition in that no other facility should be allowed to tie into this or, you know, transfer power under Edwards Avenue through this facility without the approval of the Town Board and Planning Board. I think we should make that a requirement. I'm not gonna debate how many they need with them. But if we put that in as a condition, I think it protects us for anyone else transferring onto Edwards Avenue without approval.
I agree with you fully, Mr. Chairman, and I did speak to the town attorney, the easement agreement that they are gonna execute, enter into with the town under Edwards Avenue. It will place a requirement, it will place a limitation for the twenty-two-point-nine megawatts generated by this facility. That was something we learned during the S Power One approvals, and we will, the, any approvals granted by this board would reflect and carry through some of those same things, so we would impose, that would include as a condition that no other facilities can tie in, and that they will be limited to the twenty-two-point-nine megawatts generated at this facility.
Okay. The other question really that I have is the forty-five-foot pole that you've mentioned. That did not appear on previous site plans. And if you look back on the EAF signed by the applicant on September fourth, two thousand eighteen, it says that the tallest structure is eleven feet tall. And that's on page four of the EAF, so my question or comment really is, so if that information in site plan for eleven-foot pole was used by the Town Board to declare a negative deck and issue the special permit, I mean, wasn't that inaccurate?
No.
No?
Well, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and initially on the site plan applications, you know, in the initial drawing packets that were submitted, there were no side profiles that were listed on that, on the detailed sheets. It was basically just a, you know, it's, it's an overall site plan drawing, and it identifies static mass. I did not receive those, the profiles or the details of that electric substation until I asked recently. When I did ask for them, they did provide them, and that's why, you know, we, we kinda got caught up in the special permit phase, and now that we're digging down into the site plan details is when this stuff really came to light, but those initial drawings that I did receive from the applicant had preparation dates, I believe, ranging back from two thousand eighteen and to two thousand nineteen. So those were drawings that the applicant did have when they, you know, I would believe at the submission of this application, or at least prior to that. So you know, the, the fact that I had to go and dig in and ask for those details, I would agree with you, but again, I, I think any visual impacts really could be mitigated. I don't know that that something significantly would rise to the level, but I do agree with you that, yes, it'd be, fully A F does say eleven feet, and they're clearly stating in their detailed drawings that these static masks would be forty-five feet, so I do agree.
I heard a quick no from Mr. La Squadro. Let's give him a chance to explain.
Sure. And, and what I'd like to do, and by the way, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good afternoon, and thanks for, thanks for bearing with this under, under the circumstances with the weather. And I'll note, too, that I have Michael Dowlin and Prescott Hartshorn and William Boer on behalf of the applicant, who, who will be able to add in and elaborate on some of these matters as well, which I think will be very beneficial, because they have a lot of technical details, and there are a lot of things that they can provide that will be, give added color and background, so Michael, I imagine you and Prescott and Bill are, are logged in now, and you're listening along?
Yep, I am, I'm here.
Okay, great. So, so let me just say this, and I'll certainly have Michael and Bill weigh in, but with respect to the matter on the EAF, I think it's very, very clear, again, this is from my perspective, of course, but I think even objectively, there was no, not an intent to hide something or to omit something. And let's remember, too, this has been an extraordinarily well-vetted process over the course of years. And remember, with, with the delay that was attendant to COVID, there was an extra year that was even built in that was never anticipated. But you're talking about essentially three years where there's been meetings and more meetings, and any request ever made at any point in time for any clarification or further submission was honored instantly, and even as Mr. Bergman just mentioned himself, there were many, many things that were just requested within the past seven to fourteen days, and the turnaround has really been almost instantaneous. Now, with respect to the EAF, it's very clear that, and I'm looking here at the language, that that is mentioned within the context of building space. So that's where the eleven feet came in. It's not that there was an effort to, to not reveal or to not discuss or bring to anyone's attention the forty-five feet. It's that it's in the context, as I see this section of the EAF, because there's a, a one, a two, and a three, and it's talking about then ending with approximate extent of building space. So that's how the applicant took this, was in the context of building space, and this is not a building. Now, Michael and Bill, you know, that is my take on this, of course, as I understand it, and I think it's very reasonable and explains it very well, but I know perhaps from a further technical perspective, Michael and Bill, you'd like to add in and maybe add a little bit to that, since this is an issue that the chairman would like us to discuss a little further.
Yeah, of course. I mean, I really don't think there's too much to add, so with that section B, I think section B and then subsection G, which, you know, if you look at the sections one, two, and three of that question, it states pretty clearly total number of structures. We did not actually say one, two, three structures. You can see we, as this is not a building, we put in fixed till tables, inverters, and substation controls and enclosures, so we actually put a manual edit in there to be more clear. And the second piece of that, number two and three, there will be one small building for the substation control house, so that's what we put in there, the eleven feet by fourteen. And you can see then, number three, building space to be heated or cooled wasn't applicable.
So, so Mr. Chairman, I respectfully submit that it was, it was an intent and an effort, as reflected in the documents by, by the applicant, you know, to be very specific and to be, you know, particularly responsive to what was requested. It, it just, that, that wasn't called for at that point in time.
Well, I mean, when you're doing a EAF, you know, the visual impacts, I mean, the difference between eleven feet and forty-five feet, being it a structure or not, I don't know, and I don't know that any one of you could, could speak on behalf of the Town Board. Did they approve the negative deck, you know, knowing that it was a forty-five-foot structure, or does that change anything? So I, I would like to, I'm not gonna say kick it back to them, but get some input from the Town Board as to, you know, say that they approved a special permit and that they're fine with the forty-five-foot structure, because they did the environmental review and approved a special permit. I'm not gonna say that we're gonna hold up scheduling your public hearing today, but I'm gonna want something in writing from the Town Board addressing this matter, because it's kinda getting kicked to the planning board unfairly. And I, I think we really need to address it properly and dot our i's and cross our t's. Because again, I, you know, in reading this information or it bring, being brought to my attention, you know, there's, there's a pretty big discrepancy here, and, and I'd like clarification before we get to any preliminary approval from the Town Board.
Well, fortunately, we'll have the time to do that, because I, we'll, we'll ask them to address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Boer with the applicant. I just wanted to give a little context on what these things are, too. The static mass is for lightning protection. I know our current, that previous drawing that's with the town now, they'll say forty-five feet, but our proposed height is going to be forty feet. They're approximately ten inches at the top in diameter. So they're not massive structures, and they're about the same height as the, the utility poles that currently run along Edwards Avenue now. So I wouldn't consider them too dissimilar from, you know, a typical utility pole that you see along the side of roads there. So I don't think it'll result in a major contrast or anything than, than, you know, the existing poles that are out there now.
You know, strictly a ground?
And then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kanseski, I'm sorry.
Yes, is it strictly a grounding rod? The pole?
Bill, if you could answer.
I know it's for lightning protection. I would assume it's a grounding rod. I can confirm that with one of our engineers, but yeah, considering that it is for lightning protection, then, yeah.
Correct, yeah, pretty much it is for, exactly for lightning protection.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get that exact answer for you, but it is, as Bill said.
Thank you.
All right, so again, you know, I don't wanna keep, you know, going over this, but it is, you know, a difference in the tallest structure. I know you're not calling it a structure that was identified EAF in, you know, the Town Board based their negative deck on that EAF, so if we get some clarifications then for our files and for the files for this application, I would feel more comfortable moving forward. Is there, and you know, the other thing, too, is I really, I agree with Greg. That step-up facility, we really should try and put that back further on the property. We really need to.
So can I, Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Dowling for the, can I, can I speak to that for a minute?
Sure.
So what Bill, what Bill said is definitely correct. It's, we're gonna, we're gonna be forty feet now. So we spoke with the planning staff last week about all the items we were sending over, and this was mentioned. We, we have always tried to be as accommodative as possible, right? We've moved panels, we've made sure to cut down, you know, no, no natural trees, extra vegetative screening. But this, moving the substation, it doesn't sound like much, but it is actually, you know, it cannot happen for us. We, we provided our engineer, he sent a letter over that was sent to the planning staff yesterday or the day before, maybe, maybe just yesterday, quoting the reasons that cannot happen. And, you know, it's a two-page document, there's multiple reasons, and then there's the takeaway that, you know, it is not feasible, but to add on to that, we also submitted another document which talks about some of the items Bill Boer just discussed, along with the vegetative screening that we're providing. And we think it's, you know, more than adequate to, for the substation to be there. In addition, where the substation is currently located, it, it's probably even a better location than what, where you're thinking, right? Along, there's other utility poles, there's the fuel oil tanks, there's the other solar project. We would actually think if you were moving into the, the middle of the field, it would, it would be worse. But just, I wanted to let you know that.
So I mean, I, I will just jump in real quick, I will. The, the applicant did provide some comments from their ECI Engineering Company yesterday. And they did provide a quick little visual assessment of that corridor down Edwards Avenue. Essentially, and I don't have, I apologize with the, the last minute send home, I don't, I didn't have time to prepare the documents, but the ECI Engineering Report essentially stated that, you know, they've done a lot of engineering on this. It sounded, I think there were some comments that, it appears as though maybe they've ordered some of the materials, and there's a long lead time, and it cited really construction delays. But you know, the, the fact that, you know, without having any kind of site plan approvals or any kind of building permits, you know, where the planning board is charged with site layout and site design and approving something that is gonna be there for at least thirty years, potentially longer, you know, they've really got a way in those visual impacts. So I mean, you know, if there's some additional engineering that needs to happen, I mean, you know, we review a number of site plans that go through numerous revisions. To date, to date right now, the only, you know, the site plan that I'm reviewing has one revision date on it. And, you know, it was done to show that easement area. Now, they know there were some other minor revisions. But, you know, to state that, it would require some additional technical engineering. I don't know if that's really gonna satisfy the planning board for citing something that's gonna be there on Edwards Avenue. And then if I, just to speak to the other, the visual impacts on the corridor, I will acknowledge, you know, that area, that area of Edwards Avenue does have a pre-existing oil tank site, which existed prior to zoning. Those sites, those tanks do have a letter of pre-existing use. Those other structures, which are somewhat close to the roadway, do have a letter of pre-existing use. And there was a photograph that was taken of the existing Edwards Avenue substation. The photo of the substation, to be honest, is a little misleading, because that photo was taken as you walk down a six-hundred-foot driveway. Whereas if you're driving down Edwards Avenue, you really don't see the visual impacts from that substation. Whereas if you're driving down Edwards Avenue, you really don't see the visual impacts from that substation, being that it's about five or 600 feet away. And it is obstructed by buildings and other vegetation. So it's not really comparing apples to oranges. There was one photograph where the applicant did identify where that substation would be located and they just drew a green box around it and said, here's where it is. I might offer, you know, to try to support their position, you know, put in some kind of, have someone superimpose what this substation is going to look like behind all the vegetation. You know, for the board to really consider that and digest that, to, to show a picture of what it exists now versus what it's going to be, you know, it doesn't really give the board much to make a decision on.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and just to follow up on what Mr. Bergman just said, I, I do think that since, since we know that, again, with, you know, with the board's approval today, that we can move ahead to a hearing and, and we know we, we would have that date certain. That this is something then that we could have the opportunity to address further as, as he's inviting us to then show perhaps a more enhanced rendering, if you will, when visual simulation, because I, I think the thing to take into account with this is as follows, that it was just a request or the, the notion of this, so to speak, or the request was just made last week. So this matter was only identified, which allowed then for the very fast turnaround that we did. And this is from the electrical engineers. And I do think two things have to happen. One is of course, again, as Mr. Bergman said, to permit us to have the opportunity to show a visual rendering that takes into account our perspective on this and, and takes into account these issues. That's number one. And number two, of course, would be that perhaps the board would have then the opportunity to digest further what the experts, the electrical engineers actually had to say about this, because I do think their report is something that has to be taken into account. We respectfully request that it be taken into account because they're the expert in this and they offered an opinion as to why this would or would not work. So I, I think we have again, the opportunity to to address this, if you will, and, and I'd appreciate the chance to do that.
Well, I, speaking for myself, I'll keep an open mind. I'll take a look at it, but it's going to be hard pressed to approve anything that close to Edwards Avenue. I'm going to tell you that upfront.
I think, I think the visual rendering would be a great idea to show what, what's there now and then impose the 40 foot towers or the lightning rods. And you can see the difference from, from a different perspective from Edwards Avenue.
It's the step up facility too, that we're talking about. That's the real visual impact aside from that tall, you know, hole.
Again, so we do have a resolution on to schedule this for a public hearing. I, I think these are issues that can be just addressed, as I said, let the applicant come back with some information to, for the board to digest. But we do have a resolution on for this meeting, which would schedule the public hearing for March 4th. Now usually based on the time of posting in the local newspaper, we wouldn't be able to turn it around as quickly. But I did speak with Mr. La Squadro. They have agreed to assume the cost and responsibility to post that notice in Newsday, which is a daily publication, which would allow them to meet the minimum 10 day public hearing posting requirement as required by our town code and by state law. So the applicant has acknowledged that they will post the attached public notice in Newsday so that we can get them on on the March 4th schedule and move this application along.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I'll note that again, to try to be as efficient as possible and not let there be any delay or or unintended mishaps that that arrange, those arrangements have already been made.
Okay.
Then I have another question.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
I think at the, at the, at our last meeting, it was mentioned that as far as cut and fills go on the western portion of the golf course, if you will, that there would be no importing of, of material or exporting, that you're just going to spread it around. Is that correct? Because, you know, I played the golf course a number of times in, in past years. And up in Delphie's corner, there's a big hill, very big hill. And I assume that's going to be flattened out. But it, on your drawings that I received, the, the C numbers, I wondered if you could appoint to the drawing that I could look at that shows the final grade after you cut and fill or move, move dirt around. Right now, you can, you can give it to Greg at some point.
Okay.
Bill, is that something you can address now or?
I would just point to the, I mean, there is an overall grading plan as part of the set. And then all, all the drawings in the 300 series.
Right, right.
The 300, 301, et cetera, those identify all the existing contours and then the proposed grading contours on top of that. So that'll show.
Okay, okay. I'll look at them then that way. Thanks.
Stan, one question. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. Hi, Jeff.
With the question, as a follow-up question to Joe, if there's such a large amount of this hilltop that you're going to level out and fill the lower portions of the site, is this going to create any sort of a plateau? Or is it going to be remaining at some, is it going to match adjacent grade?
Sorry, I'm not 100% clear on the, on the question. If you're concerned about drainage, so you know, this.
No. Uh, I had, if, if you remember with Costco site, planning board members, they're going to do a cut and fill and they're going to place approximately 10 feet of fill, creating a plateau back in the rear portion of the site. And they were saying that was a net cut balance, but it was going to create a 10, very large 10 foot high plateau of dirt behind the site and then the adjacent residential properties to the west. And so that's my question. If you're doing this balanced cut and fill, are you going to basically elevate the average natural grade so you don't have to export any material?
If I may, no, we're going to meet all the existing property lines where any property that we adjust and the excess fill will be generated from the drainage areas will be placed in the area where the clubhouse currently sits, which is a significant low area. And when we spread out there, there'll be no slopes greater than 10% on the site anywhere.
Okay. So Greg, we have grading plans showing all this?
Yes, we do. And they were referred to Drew Dillingham. And as we've stated, I mean, they will provide, will require a SWIP, almost like a super SWIP for, you know, 100 plus acres of disturbance. So I mean, that the, the grading and drainage is something that will be, you know, thoroughly vetted by both town agencies and you know, the SWIP is administered by the DEC. So it'll be, it'll be thoroughly looked at.
I'm also concerned about the visual impact. If we're going to elevate things, we need to take a look at that as well. That's all.
All right. Greg, could I ask you to do something or take a look at something?
Yeah, what is that, Joe?
On the, on that western section that I was referring to, the northern.
Of the Long Island sports park parcel of the, the front nine of the golf course?
No, the back nine. The western bit.
All right. So they're, they're not actually touching the back nine.
If you go to the northern section of the western part of this project, that's where I was talking about the, the grade, the, the one green was so high, it was up like 20 or 30 feet. The northern portion, north of that is the same, is a piece of property, I believe that we have as a EIF from, from 25A. It's the one next to the 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 hardware place at that property. The southern end of that property, I believe, is at the northern end of this property. I'd like you to just take a look at that. Doesn't affect, it doesn't affect this application.
All right. Yeah, I can do anything. I can get, I'll, I'll touch base with you tomorrow. I'll get a little bit more clarification and we'll, we'll touch, touch base on that. Thank you.
Greg, just getting back to my question on the EAF that the town board used to declare a negative deck. I, I think planning staff should, should bounce that back off the town board and just, you know, assure us that they're okay with it. And it was their understanding about this 45 foot pole that they're proposing now, or now they're saying 40 foot. And that would, that had changed their negative deck had they known this. Okay? I think we should do that within the planning staff, directly back to the town board.
I will do that. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I think the only thing I'd want to add to that is that I, I don't think that I don't think we can make the leap to say that it wasn't in the EAF because of it not being a structure. I don't think we can make that leap then to the point of saying that the town board did not know about it, because the, the one thing I will say is this, the testimony and the public comment and the back and forth. And in fact, the revisiting of many issues over the course of more than one public hearing, in fact, with respect to the SECRE was extraordinarily extensive. So I, I suspect that that in some way, shape or form, along with many other things that were, that are just not on documents, but that were discussed very openly and extensively were made known to the town board. But I do, of course, I agree with your, your sentiment that better off for everyone that we have further clarification. But I just wanted to make clear that I, I can't necessarily say that it wasn't vetted because so many things were brought to the public's attention and so many things then were followed up on at the request of the public and board members.
Well, I could, I could appreciate that. But you may recall that this board actually had a bit of a debate with the town board at that time as to who was going to be the lead agency for the secret process. And the town board took it. I'm not so sure that they, they felt it was a good decision afterwards, but nonetheless, I, I want to be sure that they're aware of this. Again, it was brought to my attention. And since they were the ruling agency, let's hear from them and, and, you know, they'll be responsible if there are any complaints.
I can, I can, I will do that, Chairman. I'll prepare a memo, get to the town board and we'll get, get response back from them.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, can I, this is Michael from the applicant. Can I, there's just, I believe, one other open item that you asked for clarification on, then I'd like to just revisit one more item again. So the conduits, we provided a written response to that recently. And I know you're going to check, but it's just for clarification. Three of the conduits are, so there's three phase power. So they need to be separated. So three of the conduits are for three, one phase per conduit. And then there's two fiber lines, double redundancy. So just for clarification, that's what the conduits are used for. And then to go back, I know we, we've talked about this a lot, but I just want to make sure where our, our position is clear also. So on, on the static mass, we will absolutely provide the visual rendering from Edwards Avenue. But just to comment on some of the items that was said in response, it's, it's not just a letter talking about engineering. This is a, it's not like you turn around and re-engineer the project and we, you know, figure it out in two weeks or a month. It's a completely new project. So we've, we've been working on this project for three years. Moving that substation sets us from day one. So not only does it impact the substation location, it impacts every single panel location we have on that entire property. There's soil resistivity testing that needs to be done, soil bearing weight that needs to be done. There's the interconnection with LIPA and NISO. So this isn't, you know, as you've seen over the course of the past three years, pretty much anything we've been asked to do that has been in our control, we've accommodated. And we'll continue to do that. If there's additional screening that needs to be put in, we'll work with the town, but moving that substation, from, from our standpoint is really not feasible.
I'm not sure why you would have ordered materials if you didn't have an approved site plan. That, that part I think Greg mentioned, I, I can't figure out why you might have done that, but wouldn't the materials be the same whether it's in location A or B?
No, they're, they're similar, but they're, so again, this goes back to engineering. It's not just materials. There's multiple other items that impact. You're talking about the length of line, some of these lines take a year to order to get, after you order them, they take a year to get to you. So that's why you order them before. So there's, there's just multiple things that are moving the substation impacts and just for, for the overall project is not feasible.
No. Mr. Chairman, yes.
How about now? I've thought about this question quite a bit. This is probably the most visually impacting part of the whole project. And the only justification I see for them placing at this location is cost effectiveness. Because from a visual standpoint, I can't think of a more visually impacting location on the property other than where it is. Cost effectiveness is not really, I think, germane to the review of the, of this location. As Greg pointed out, we're going to be looking at this for some of us, rest of our lives. And you look at the time versus the cost, you know, this is something that's going to be affecting everybody that drives up and down Edwards Avenue for 30 plus years. So I, I question how much cost is really a factor in terms of addressing the visual impact. And I think you can throw as much landscaping and brooms around this. The fact of the matter is you still have this very ugly structure, structures plural in a very visible location, whereas all the other projects we've seen have placed them out of sight. So just some food for thought. All right. Thank you. Any comments from any other board member?
Ken, I would just agree that I don't know how they're going to do it. They're going to have to get imaginative, but we have to have an attract looking building if it is going to be there or well screened. I think they need to focus on that.
Understood.
We'll be looking, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, Bill again for the applicant. And again, understood your concerns. I hope you have an open mind and, you know, let us put together something to document it too. But also to consider, you know, there, there are the residences there along Edwards Avenue. If you move this, where the planning department's recommending it, it's very likely that they're going to have more visibility of the substation as opposed to where we're proposing it now. And again, compatibility consistency with the existing setting there. The static mass would be the most visible. That's pretty much the same as the utility lines along Edwards Avenue. We can do additional screening around the substation itself. You know, and understood, but when you're looking at your visual receptors in this area, you know, consider that those are, you know, vehicles traveling 30 to 45 miles per hour. This isn't something where someone's going to, you know, this is a, a public space where someone's going to stand and, and view, you know, or impact a, a sensitive receptor. So again, just hope we can keep that in mind. Certainly want to go the extra mile here to screen this thing the best we can.
Well, we will, we will certainly keep an open mind, but please understand that you run the risk of not having a majority of the board approve it in the end. So that risk is on you.
I'm sorry for interrupting. An eyesore is still an eyesore. At 30 miles an hour, at 45, it's still an eyesore. Let's see what your drawings look like.
And Stan, I'd also like to mention that we did ask him to make some landscape improvements on River Road. So we'd like to see it also.
Right.
I don't think these gentlemen want to hear my piece of mashed potato story.
All right. So I think we'll leave on, we've, we've got the resolution to schedule the hearing. I mean, we could pontificate on the, the piece of paper we have before us. Let's see, let's see some visual renderings of what that's going to look like. As you said, maybe from a couple of different vantage points from those residential properties. And let's, let's debate on that rather than just kind of dwell on this one right now.
Yeah, I agree. We'll, 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 we'll make sure that it's very comprehensive, Greg. And we'll, we'll get, we'll get it to the board through you, Greg and Jeff.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We'll, uh, we'll send that over ASAP. And just again, I know we're really drilling this item home, but I just want to, Jeff, in response to what you said, it, it wasn't purely cost, right? There, there are multiple other items, environmental, wetland area. So it just, it's not cost.
Okay. Anything else for this application? I think we've got a little work to do here. Anybody else?
Good, Stan.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item we have is Riverhead Charter School, and this one also is Greg's.
All right. So I, I don't know if anybody's here from the application. I know Tammy Kuna from PW Grocer. I had sent her a link earlier. I don't know if anybody else from PW Grocer is here. If they are, maybe they could just unmute themselves and state who they are. Alright, I, I mean, regardless, I'll continue, if there's any questions, I can relay any of the board's concerns to the applicant. So the planning department has received and reviewed an administrative site plan application proposing to construct a two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six square foot temporary classroom trailer at the center of the Riverhead Charter School. As well as install a new concrete walkways and ramps, install a new onsite sanitary system. Um, and the applicant has stated that the purpose of this schoolhouse is to provide a temporary expansion of area. To allow for more social distancing during the COVID nineteen pandemic. However, when the planning board is reviewing this application, we must, we're going to review it as though it would be a permanent structure. It's going to be installed on a foundation, they're going to have a new subsurface sanitary system and water connections. Once a certificate of occupancy is issued for this structure, uh, the town does not issue. Temporary certificates of occupancy, so to speak. You know, there would be no real grounds for us to have them go and remove the building. So we would be treating this in terms of it being a permanent structure. Uh, and that would be also something that I'm sure the health department would take into account, you know, if they're going to approve a. New subsurface sanitary system, um, I don't, I don't know if they'd be satisfied with just that it's going to be temporary. Um, so the action is a type-two action pursuant to SECR. As it involves a construction or expansion of a non-residential structure. Involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change of zone. Thus, no further environmental review is required. The applicant has submitted plans for the application, they've submitted a site plan as well as a set of architectural plans. One minor note on the architectural plans, uh, as this is kind of a prefabricated trailer. It does appear as all these drawings have notes on them which are left over from a project in Staten Island. It's a minor revision, any plans that we would approve would need to be reflective of the Riverhead Charter School site. With specifics to the site, it is a five point eight seven acre parcel of land. Located on the south side of Middle Country Road within the industrial A zoning use district. Subject parcel is presently improved with a two-story, forty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot schoolhouse. A one-story, three thousand six hundred and tw- six hundred and twenty-seven square foot classroom building. There's also a one-story, one thousand one hundred and ninety square foot administrative building. Along with related lighting, parking, landscaping and sanitary improvements. Parcel shares its western property boundary with the Bola Market Gas Station as well as the Allied Building Products Warehouse. It's eastern property boundary is shared with the Calverden Pods Warehouse Site. With regards to the proposed schoolroom trailer, as I stated, it is a two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six square foot trailer. Which would be installed to the south of the existing one-story schoolhouse, which can be seen in figure two of my staff report. Uh, the application proposed to construct concrete walkways and ramps to provide AD access to the building. One thing I do, do note is that the site plan appears to indicate that there will be a pad for ramp and stairs on the south side of the building. But it's unclear as how these ramps would provide ADA access as there does not appear to be any sort of sidewalk or walkway to that southern portion of the building. That can, is minor revision that the applicant would need to address to either show ramps and details of the walkways to demonstrate ADA compliance. In terms of prior approvals, the planning board last reviewed an application for this site in twenty seventeen. When it was an approved, it was an amendment to the site plan, the charter school itself was originally approved in twenty thirteen. By resolution number thirteen dash twenty-one in February twenty-first of twenty thirteen. The twenty seventeen approval granted by the planning board. Approved an amendment to the landscaping plan, uh, to the south of the main schoolhouse building. The original landscaping plan was supposed to be native tall grass habitat. The planning board did amend that approval and instead allowed a mowed turf grass area to be installed in that. Right now, it looks like that area they use for like soccer fields and recreation type activities for the children. I do note one of the conditions of the prior approval in twenty seventeen. Carried along a requirement for a nineteen-foot dedication along, of land along State Route twenty-five, which would be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That requirement for the nineteen-foot dedication was also a condition of the twenty thirteen approval. While these site plans now do currently still show that nineteen-foot area of dedication. It is unclear if that land was dedicated to the state. I did reach out to a representative for the Riverhead Charter School, uh, they said that the dedication had taken place. Um, I asked them to provide proof of that dedication as I did not find any sort of uh, proof of that in our historic files. Um, so I'm just waiting on the confirmation for that. If they do provide it, that'll be great, uh, but I would still recommend that prior to any building permits being issued. Being that this is a condition that's kind of still lingering and unclear from twenty thirteen. Prior to any building permits being issued, they need to demonstrate that that dedication's taken place. In terms of groundwater management zone, it's located within Suffolk County Groundwater Management Zone Three, which permits three hundred gallons per day per acre. Based on the allow, based on the site's size. It appears as though they're allowable, sanitary flow is one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one gallons per day. They seem to be well exceeding that, now, I mean, that's really ultimately a decision for the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. I'm, I'm not sure how they achieved such a sanitary flow if it was through use of a specific system or by credits. But they will require Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval before any building permits can be issued for the new trailer. The plans were referred to the Riverhead Water District. They are proposing to connect. New trailer to a one-inch water service line which will tap into the site's existing water feed. The proposed one-inch line will be installed after the RPZ device, meaning the public water supply will be protected, this does not pose any uh, detriment to the Riverhead Water District. Um, and in an email dated February twelfth of twenty-one. The Riverhead Water District Superintendent states that they support the project and do not think it will have a significant impact on the system, uh, and they will be assessing for key money. Referral of the application to the Suffolk County Planning Commission is not required based on the size and scope of the project. Uh, and being that the site plan defaults under the administrative site plan review criteria, the board can elect to waive the requirements of a public hearing on this application. Pending any, pending any additional concerns or I, uh, issues identified by the board. The planning board could move to approve this application pending satisfaction of any issues.
Okay, thanks Greg, so no one from the charter school came on today?
Uh, I do not believe so, uh, because I know the, one of the representatives, Nicola from the charter school, she was going on vacation, so she is out of town. Um, I do not see Tammy. Kuna in the boardroom. Already, and any, any concerns or questions the board have, I will relate to both the applicant and the charter school.
Okay, so just a couple of questions, Greg. Did uh. The fire marshal review this?
Uh, plans were reviewed to them, I haven't, I haven't gotten comments back yet from them.
I'd like to see comments from them. Um, I, I mean, I do agree it should be administrative, we don't need to, to drag this out for the school. But um, I think being that it's going to be occupied by children, I would assume the fire marshal comments are, are important for the record. Um, and also a question, um. Does it require any approval from the New York State Department of Education?
That's a question I would probably defer to Dick Gellers on, I'm not sure, I, I know they're not a public school per se. They are a charter school, I'm not sure what.
But they get state funding, right?
I believe so.
So I just know, you know, when we deal with the, the other school districts that, um. You know, they really don't even come to us, sometimes we get a courtesy set of plans to review, but they are. Approved by the state uh, education department, I'm just wondering if they have any input here.
I, I believe this uh, school gets a town of Riverhead building permit, not a state education building permit.
Okay.
And that's, that's the history of it, but I'll, I'll discuss it with Greg further and we'll clarify that for you.
Right, okay, so just the fire marshal comments, if that's the case at the very least. And last question, Greg, did we require any landscaping, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a trailer really, and I mean, I saw the drawings, they don't really look that nice, we were just talking about visual impacts, this is on a main road. Could we require a little bit of landscaping at least, just something to make it look nice from the road?
Um, I mean, we could require, if, if you look at figure two, I mean, we, they could probably propose some additional. Trees or something in that, uh. You know, in the one vantage point, it, it would really only be visible from that vantage point that I uh, shown in red.
Right.
So I mean, I can, I can make the recommendation if they want to make and maybe throw up a couple of trees or even. Honestly, it looks like they could probably put like a, a six-foot fence, a PVC fence or something would almost obscure that, the view of that trailer. Because it is, it is basically behind that existing, uh. That I believe it's the schoolhouse building right on twenty-five.
Greg, I'm sorry, you may have already addressed it, um. They're calling this temporary and temporary is a relative term, do they give us a length of time?
I, I mean, again, I, I, I stated that at the beginning, I mean, we're, we, we would have to treat this as though it's going to be there for good. We, we have no grounds, once a CO is issued. We have no grounds to say go and take this down, so. You know, once the pandemic can, you know. Kind of hopefully eases up a little bit. You know, the likelihood is that this trailer would be used in some capacity by the school. In a.
I agree with Greg, the fence is uh.
Yep.
Is a, is a much more visually opaque. Because if the tree dies, we know, we're not going to go and force a dead tree, but if the fence is up there, it takes care of it once and for all.
Okay. Anything?
Greg, I got, I got a question, Greg.
Yes.
Temporarily, we, 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 we beat the temporary building up for a while here, but. Since this is a foundation, you said there is no basement, I'm assuming there's no basement here?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, so what is, how, how do they and are they going to tie it in? To the existing, that original old schoolhouse? Because it's just about the same size within, you know, seven or eight hundred feet. Of that building now, the, the box that you drew obviously would, wouldn't render any help. Because it's, I assume that from the, from the drawing, it'll be long and narrow. But are there, is there going to be a tie-way in from one building to the next?
No, there's not, the uh, the building, the, the existing single-story schoolhouse on the, that fronts on Main Road. Twenty-five, it, it is a separate building, there's no connection. To either, there's no connection to either building, it's going to be a separate standalone building.
Okay, okay.
I just have a, a, a concern and that has to do with the uh. The sanitary discussions because I think we really need to get. Some sort of information from the health department on this. Uh, on their being over density. Before we approve anything on this.
Alright, I can reach out, I, I know I have had discussions with the applicant's engineer, um, they have said that they. I, I don't know the specifics, so I don't want to misquote myself or misrepresented it, but. I, I know that there are issues with the health department, and I mean, as I stated, like, I, I don't know where they got their initial density from, how they're over, but. You know, to add another facility, I mean, there is one page of the site plan where they claim that. It's effectively the sanitary density will be transferred from the school because they're just doing this for an expansion of. Social distancing space, but I mean, again, I, you know. That, that's really for the health department to decide, I, I ultimately see the structure remaining on-site. And being utilized in some fashion, but I, I don't want to speak too much about that without the applicant being present. I will relay that concern to the applicant's engineer, uh, we can get some clarification on that.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I don't like to hold things up, but I'd like to get that answer, answered. Before we talk about an administrative, uh. An administrative resolution.
Alright. Okay, anybody else? Nope. Alright, thank you. Okay, next item we have is uh, Dundevic. Residence chapter two nineteen, and this one is Brian's.
The planning department has received and reviewed a chapter two nineteen coastal erosion hazard line permit application. Seeking approval to perform bluff reinforcement improvements at Six Cliff Way in Banning Hollow. Including the installation of a seventy-one linear foot stone revetment at the toe of the bluff. The installation of vegetative plantings and terracing across the face of the bluff. And the construction of a thirty linear foot vegetated berm at the top of the bluff. Post-action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. Coordinated review is optional and not recommended. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency status and issue a negative declaration. As the application proposes to repair, reinforce and prevent future damage to the bluff. And there are no foreseeable negative environmental impacts from the proposed improvements. The subject parcel is a zero point one three nine acre parcel located at Six Cliff Way in Banning Hollow. Within the residence A forty zoning use district. Near the northern terminus of Edwards Avenue. The subject parcel can be seen in figure one of my staff report outlined in red. The site is presently approved with a two-story frame, single-family dwelling with a masonry, uh, masonry garage underneath.
Hey Craig, a bit.
For which a letter of pre-existing use was issued on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and one. Property slopes upward from the cliffway, reaches a high point near the top of the bluff and then descends down the face of the bluff to the beach. Figure two shows the existing dwelling viewed from Cliff Way. The existing face, the bluff is heavily eroded with little remaining vegetation, as shown in figure three of my report. Uh, all of the proposed improvements uh, relate to the reinforcement, stabilization and protection of the bluff. The toe of the bluff, the rock revetment is proposed to be constructed using one to four ton core stone with a filter fabric base. Across the face of the bluff, the application proposes to establish vegetation on patchy and barren slope faces. The proposed plantings are a combination of beach grasses, bushes and minor trees. Terracing is also proposed, proposed to stabilize the bluff face and prevent erosion, uh, to be constructed using CCA-treated stakes and planks. And the two-foot high by thirty-foot long vegetated berm is proposed at the top of the bluff, which will be located along the bluff edge towards the western side of the property, as shown in figure four of the report. Plans indicate that uh, any required machinery access to the be, uh, to the beach area of the property would be conducted via Edwards Avenue, approximately three hundred sixty-three feet to the west. A small portion of the stone revetment that is proposed in the application crosses over the western boundary of the parcel onto the neighboring parcel. Uh, and owners in authorization for this uh, proposed improvement has been received by the planning department. Proposed improvements are permitted uh, under town code, which allows for minor alterations of a bluff done in accordance with the conditions stated in the coastal erosion management permit issued for new construction. Modification or restoration of an erosion protection structure. Uh, in a memo dated December second, twenty twenty, uh, town's consulting engineer uh, took no objection to the proposed improvements. And the application has also received uh, New York State DEC title wetlands permit for the proposed improvements. We do have the representative for the applicant, Gina Rigdon on call, and we also have. If I'm not mistaken, the owner of the proper, Anna K. Sundvik on the Zoom call.
Brian, when the project is completed, is it going to impede the public's ability to use the beach?
Uh, it should not, uh, none of the proposed improvements really extend beyond the, the toe of the bluff where the, the revetment is proposed.
Ryan, are there any restrictions as far as time of construction for this?
Uh, yes, we've included restrictions in the um, the resolution that is on the schedule for today's agenda relating to um. Access across the beach uh, with motorized vehicles, um, which states that they shall not operate any motor vehicle on the beach between May fifteenth and September fifteenth. Of any calendar year, both inclusive, um, pursuant to town code. Regarding motor vehicle operations on town beaches.
Um, I assume it's the applicant's intent to get it done before that May, May date?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? And then this is pretty straightforward.
No, I'm good.
Joe, Joe, you're still on mute? Joe, you, there you go.
Um, I just have a curious question, on the top of the, uh, top of the bluff, you, you're putting this two-foot by thirty-foot vegetated berm. Is that because you're seeing erosion right there at that point?
No. That's because generally during the design, uh, the DEC asks for a vegetated berm on top. To control and or prevent runoff from coming over the top face of the bluff. That contributes to um, one of the three forms of erosion.
Okay. I, because I did notice that, that, excuse me, that you're sloping up. So and it should, it should run down instead of down the bluff, but.
Like I said, we're required to do a small.
What, what sort of plantings are you going to put in?
There's a combination, uh, beach pond, um, obviously Cape American beach grass, twelve inches sun center. Um, depending on the availability, could be uh, switchgrass as well, uh, shrubs put in. And we always like to throw in a little Rosa Regusa, I know it's not native. Um, it's Japanese, but it, it does a hell of a job holding a bluff up and it's reasonably priced.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will vote for this under the resolutions in, in a minute or two.
Thank you, board. Stay safe.
Thank you. Okay, before we do, any other comments from the board?
No, sure.
Okay, before we get to the resolutions, there are no public hearings today. Um, any comments from the public on resolutions? Any comments at all? I don't see anybody's hand up. I don't see anybody unmuted. Okay, so we will go with the resolutions.
I'd like to move resolution number fourteen, the vistas of baiting hollow condominium map, condominium map. Planning and approval for amended condominium map, so.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution fourteen for the vistas of baiting hollow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear any no's, so I won't take a, a roll vote. The resolution is approved. Number two on the agenda.
I'll move resolution fifteen, North Fork developers to, uh, approve the eleven lot subdivision as submitted. So moved.
Second, the motion?
Okay, just for clarification, um, this is for the yield map only, not, not so much the subdivision. We've got a ways to go before we do that, so just want to make that note. Uh, but we do have a, uh, motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifteen for North Fork developers for, uh, as of right yield map. All in favor?
I'll move resolution number sixteen.
Please, discussion before we move it. P S E N G canopy project.
Sure.
Everything they have their meat dark skies, uh, in this application.
Uh, yes, sir. They actually did, uh, the applicant did submit the mylars and the revised plans. And those lighting, the lights underneath the canopy have been revised to the three thousand degree Kelvin. Uh, they will be obscured by the canopies themselves. Uh, and just as a, a touch up note, I did speak with the applicants' design professional, uh, regarding the number of solar panels on those roofs. Um, they are being proposed to those solar panels will power those lights directly underneath those canopies.
Greg, one more question about that same thing. You remember my comment about adding more solar panels? To the roofs that they're putting in? Any comment on that from them?
Um, yeah, and I mean, I, I did speak to the applicant and, and really what it, it's kind of a, a situation where National Grid owns the property, P S E G leases the property. Um, so it was really kind of like a, a landlord tenant thing where it's like P S E G leases the property to go and put solar panels on them to then benefit National Grid. Uh, it was, I mean, a little, a little bit tricky, but like I said, I mean, they, they, they basically, you know, those, those solar panels will power it. So I mean, it will be really a a net zero in terms of electrical consumption because they are putting those solar panels to power those lights that they're proposing currently.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Greg. Yeah, go ahead.
The New York D E C spill history area on us. Seventeen spill incidents, uh, subject property with the D E C going back to nineteen ninety three. I think that ought to be emphasized in this, uh, in this, uh, looking over and, and doing a, a resolution on this situation. Request has been made to P G to provide the most recent monitoring, whether that's done or not. And, uh, what extent to request for data will impact, uh, approval process. Also on the water district area, which is on further in. I take the opportunity to inform the applicant that due to close proximity to our water supply, the applicant should take every precaution. I think we should, uh, highlight that as, as we did in the, uh, in the, uh, comments. So I think it's a little loose, the resolution, so that's my, that's what I, uh, have to say about that.
All right, um, I mean, I'm not sure how the, how the board would like to address that in the resolution specifically. You know, as they did provide the, uh, the data, we did speak about it at the last meeting, all those, uh, all the spills at the D E C have been closed. Um, they did have to do some remediation regarding, uh, some larger spills there. Uh, there were some orders on consent to clean that stuff up. Um, I mean, I, I was under the impression that the board was satisfied with the uh, discussion that we had last meeting, but if there's some suggestions that you'd like to put into the resolution, uh, specifically, we can amend it on the floor.
Those ones I, I mentioned, I think you could look over and the monitoring rules, uh, situation I see in the end of the situation. Take a look at that if you would.
Okay, Greg. Maybe, um, what we could do is is we could amend the resolution, uh, to say, so we did discuss this. Um, you know, the, the D E C said that those, uh, spills and monitoring well issues were satisfied. Um, but perhaps we could just add to the resolution to feel a little bit more comfortable that the applicant understands, uh, the proximity and sensitivity to the, uh, town of Riverhead Water District well facility. Um, and will take the necessary precautions or something to that effect.
There are, there are comments in the resolution from, from the water district. Okay, in the whereas.
But what is it? I, I didn't see it specifically capturing what Dick had alluded to and what I had mentioned. I mean, I, I don't think it hurts to, to kind of put them on notice as to the, the general proximity to the public water supply right there, their neighboring site.
All right, so you know, just, just bear with me, um. If you want to move on to the rest of the resolutions, I'm going to pull it up right now. I don't have it in front of me. I'm going to pull it up and I'll just come up with something as we go and then we'll come back to it at the end. Just give me one second.
That'd be good.
So we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on, uh, sixteen and we'll take up seventeen.
I'll move number seventeen, which is the coastal erosion hazard permit for Sundvik Residence at the sixth cliffway in baiting hollow.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventeen for chapter two nineteen for Sundvik Residence. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear any no's. That's approved. Eighteen.
I'll move resolution number eighteen for the scheduling of public hearing for March fourth, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to, um, approve resolution eighteen, which schedules a public hearing. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to vote no on this one. Um, I, I think, uh, this is being rushed and, and kind of, um, I appreciate the applicant, uh, responding quickly to everything, but when you rush, mistakes are made and things are missed. Uh, however, I heard, uh, four yeses and I am the only no, so this resolution is approved. Number nineteen.
I'd like to make a comment on nineteen. I know it's a late, it's a late starter, but I did not get a copy of the resolution itself. I know, I know there was something written into the agenda, but I didn't get a copy of the resolution itself, so I'm going to be, have to vote negative.
Okay, so this is an administrative site plan. Um, you know, the, the applicant had reached out a couple of times and, and, you know, was hoping to get this, uh, moved along. So it was added at the last minute. I did have a question which Greg added into the conditions. Uh, there's a lot of things that happen on that property that are really not related to this application, so we did capture in the resolution that, um, it really doesn't, uh, endorse or approve any other activities or events that require a special permit from the town board, so that made me more comfortable. And the only question I have, Greg, is, is would that, was that shared with the applicant? Cause we did it kind of last minute.
Um, I did not get to send it out to the applicant. Uh, unfortunately, we were kind of right at the wire and then we were told we had to leave, so I did not, uh, not.
Arthur there, are you representing the applicant, Arthur?
Believe we have Arthur on the call, you know, and it appears he's muted, um, but he, he is, uh, the.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm representing the applicant, yes.
Okay, so, um, were you aware that we put a condition in there, uh, that you know, this approval is only specific to what you've listed on the site plan and doesn't approve or endorse any of, uh, events or activities outside that would require a special permit from the town board?
Um, I wasn't aware of it, but I'm also not clear as to, um, you know, how that stipulation would really impact us negatively anyway. Um, I don't know if this is, I don't know if you're familiar with what goes on, on, on the site, but I would, I would assume that you're, um, referring to, for example, their fall fest that they'll have in the fall a lot of times and other events that would take place, um, outside the actual restaurant building itself. That's referring to? I'm just, I just want clarification on what that exactly means.
Well, you know, it, it, it's, it means that, you know, what we're approving is not approving those events that you, you may be speaking towards, or structures related to those events.
Right, yeah.
We're only approving what is proposed for, on, on your application.
Right, which would be that addition to the kitchen, which is, um, primarily going to be used for, um, essentially takeout orders, you know? Essentially, it's, it's just, it's a prep kitchen and it's just, it's facilitating essentially the, um, increased demand of takeout orders and that, you know, everything entailed in that.
Yes, we're fine with all that. We're fine with all that, but again, we just wanted to feel comfortable and, and add that into the resolution.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't see whether there would be an issue.
Okay, any more discussion on, on nineteen? Somebody want to?
Comment a little bit. I, I really wanted to thank planning staff for getting this done. This is a local restaurant, family run restaurant in a really dire time for restaurants. I'm happy we can help them a little bit and I'm really happy that the planning department helped us out too. That's it.
Okay.
Did we, did anybody move it yet, Stan?
No.
I'll move the resolution. I'll move the resolution. Uh, Cooperage Inn, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution nineteen, Cooperage Inn alteration, alterations for a, a five hundred fifty square foot addition. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Get those pot pies out.
Yeah, that's what this is for, so we'll get them out.
I'm, I'm opposed administratively.
You're opposed administratively?
Yes, because I never received a copy of the resolution.
Okay, all right, so it's, uh, four to one. Uh, let the record show that member Bear voted no. Um, Greg, are you ready?
Um, yeah, so I've, uh, kind of lost the screen here, but what I would, what I would offer is that, I mean, it would just be a simple one line addition. Um, where in the, in the resolves, we approve the plans with the following conditions. Um, you know, let's just put it right up front that the applicant is aware of and shall follow all applicable rules and regulations regarding New York State D E C and Suffolk County Department of Health Services compliance procedures for onsite storage and handling of hazardous materials. Um, on the fly, I mean, I think that's kind of the quickest and most succinct uh, caveat that I'd be able to put in there.
Hey, Mr. Alice, does that sound acceptable?
Yeah, I think that sounds acceptable. I think we could, we, we understand the concept. Maybe Greg can put that language to us all tomorrow. We could all review it and, uh, it could be adopted that way.
Great. Okay, somebody can move sixteen?
I'll move resolution, yes, E and G canopy project, so moved.
As amended. As amended.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixteen for the P S E G canopy project as amended. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, that resolution is approved. Um, anyone from the public, any public comments today? Any public comments? I'm not sure we have anyone left. Okay, so the minutes were on February fourth?
I'll move the minutes from February fourth.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty one. All in favor? Okay, other business, just a quick question, maybe Jefferson, any progress on that, um, BJ's gas station on Ostrander and fifty eight?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I have been an email correspondence back and forth with representatives from BJ's directly. I also spoke with the manager of BJ's, uh, site location. Uh, they're going to, uh, start looking at the signage of the two-way pumps, which my opinion does not work as funny this week. Both Greg and I went to BJ's gas station the same day at different times. And both of us experienced the same visual observation in that approximately half the cars were going in the wrong direction. And that's because the cars are wanting to put the gas cap adjacent to the pump. So they're either not aware that the hoses extend across the back of the car, it can reach either side, or they don't care. Uh, and there was nobody there to correct them or direct traffic and you have cars backing out, cars pulling in. The signage needs to be improved. The other thing, um, of note is that I'm totally aware of the hose's extension to the other side of the car. Um, I don't, I'm not the strongest person in the world, I'm not the weakest person in the world, but to, you have to take two hands to manhandle the hose and pull it across the back of the car. One hand holding the hose, the other one holding the spout into the car while you're pumping gas. And if you are not a physical strength to do that, you're not going to do it. And it does require a little bit, as Greg pointed out, called it, he called it manhandling the hose to get it to do that. And unless you go and ask for somebody to help you, you're not going to do it. So it's creating a lot of backing up of traffic unnecessarily. And my recommendation to the manager was is that you, not just have two people inside the building, you need somebody outside the building helping direct traffic and then helping them with pumping the gas if they need to. And that'd be the first.
Let me make. I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment on that. Uh, well taken, you're absolutely right. Uh, something that should be added to that because I guess I've been quite a bit myself. It, one, several of the hoses do not, I repeat, do not extend to the other side. And they're marked, so clearly those pumps are marked when it says this hose does not extend. So that has to be taken into consideration. I'm not sure why they don't extend. But it, it might be something to take a note and, you know, add to the, to the discussion when you talk to them.
That's, that's excellent point.
It is specifically pump number five, when you go, I mean, I go there, you know, once a week, once, twice a week.
Right.
Pump number five doesn't extend. I mean, that's probably just a broken pump, uh, hose, but yeah, like I said, it's, you know, it's the consistent, they come off, they come off fifty eight.
Yeah, and, and, and most people are driving to a gas station, they're familiar with pulling up to the pump with the cast cap on the side of the pump. They're not reading the, the signs.
Agreed.
So I, I go there and I agree with everything that's said, no doubt.
I don't know that that's necessarily going to solve the traffic issue that's backing up on to route fifty eight. Um, I see we do have Mr. Kent still on the call, on the call. Is he, uh, able to unmute himself? And maybe help us out with this a little bit? That was his application, wasn't it?
Uh, I, I think he represented the property owner. I don't think he would. I, I did speak with Mr. Ken. He's the one who got us a contact information from someone. Corporate, um, but he's not really involved going forward, so I mean, he, he basically acted as a connection for us to get, to hold the sucker up there.
Well, I mean, Jeff, if, uh, Jefferson, if you could stay on top of it.
Absolutely.
It's not getting any better and, you know, uh, the pumps are the pumps, but I just don't see how that's going to, even a person being in there, how it's going to solve the problem going back out onto fifty eight, so let's try and stay on top of it before disaster strikes.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Okay, any other business for the board today?
No, sir.
Next meeting Thursday, March fourth. Hopefully be a little bit better weather. Uh, that's at seven P M. Um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that worked out well. Thank you. Good job, Chip. Thanks, everybody. Be safe.
Good job. Be safe.
All right, bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.